Thank you, everybody, for joining us. If there's no objections, I'd like to call the order of the meeting of the REO. And thank you all for your time and your patience getting us started. I believe that you should have, the members of the committee should have received a copy of the minutes from the previous meeting in August, on August seventeenth.
Make a motion.
Motion has been made to accept those minutes. Second.
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 All in favor, just please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and I.
Aye.
Thank you. Shay, I know you have a new position, new status. Hope has left, is that correct or accurate?
Correct. Hope is the new deputy director of procurement. And we are in the process, Lindsay and I are in the process of hiring for Hope's position right now.
Okay, is that, and that position is public? No, I mean, out.
Yes, it was posted and yes, correct.
Okay, well, we wish Hope and much success in her new position. We thank her very much for all her work. And I'm sure we're going to work with Sierra at some point going forward as well. And Shay, you will be continuing as our liaison, including your new position?
I will be, I will be. And once my position gets filled, I'll be transitioning the new worker as well. So you guys won't get rid of me that soon.
Okay, well, we, we said, we'll, we'll deal with it when it comes down to that point. Yes, I apologize. Are, Shay, are you prepared to kind of give us an overview of the final numbers for Lincoln Brightwood?
I mean, yeah, they've only dropped off a fraction of a percentage point here or there, only because we've had a couple specialty subs at the end of the project who really had very small numbers and didn't really have the goals because they had very small specialized workforces with small numbers. So that the percentage points went down maybe a fraction here or there, but they're not far off at all from what they were when we finished the project in totality.
Were there any particular trades or subset subcontractors, any party of note that we should be concerned with?
We, in conjunction with O'Connell and Sons, sent out letters to the subs concerning their performance. So the goals that they met, they were committed for such, and the goals that they missed, we let them know as far as that was concerned, and that they need to be done better for municipal projects. We have our eye on a couple of subs that have transitioned to the Berry Homer project and we're being proactive to be on top of them and make sure that they are doing what's necessary to meet their goals.
And if it's appropriate, Liz, you're aware of these particular, I mean, first welcome, Liz, and are you, Shay, have had a discussion about these individuals in an appropriate fashion so that they're at least on your radar?
Oh, yes, yes, many discussions. We are, you know, looking at these numbers weekly and then, you know, connecting when something does not look right. And that also extends to the project managers. They're also initiating these conversations with those particular subs as well.
Okay, thank you.
To piggyback off of Liz, sorry, counselor. They've been, Fontaine has been great, I just have to say that. On the front end, Fontaine, Liz has been great. And their project managers have been great as far as being communicative with meetings, with emails, and with the subs to let them know that this is a requirement and that we're gonna make sure that these goals are met. So they've been, they've been on top of their game, and I'm appreciative of that. So thank you, Liz.
Okay. Fiore, I'm gonna get into Dbury in a few minutes, but Fiore, you want to start off soft with any questions about Brightwood? Lincoln? You have to unmute yourself.
Yeah, I got it. So I just want to make a quick comment. So at the end of the day, you know, the numbers were, were close. We had a little bit of a miss, but, you know, I just, it needs to be said that sending the letters to the subs is great that they, we put them on notice, but it also has to go and kick back on the general contractor. We took the numbers off the subs and put them on the GC as his responsibility, and that entails hiring subs. Some he's gonna get stuck with, with the filed sub bid, and we'll have to look at those contractors that continue to bid for the city who do not perform. How we go about either rejecting your bid or doing something about that in the future, it's not a conversation for today. But ultimately, we have to make the general contract because we're going forward. It is their responsibility to hire contractors that conform to these numbers and these standards. And at that point, it just, you know, I just wanted to say it also, we have to, not this GC, I think we've already told them, but we just need to make sure that GCs realize it is ultimately their responsibility. And that entails hiring the right contractors that have the numbers. Okay, thanks.
You can lower your hand if you'd like, Fiore, as well. Lindsay, would you like to comment or question?
I mean, I will just comment the same way I've commented in the past couple of meetings when we discussed this because I don't think the numbers have changed in any way that will change the feeling that I have towards the project, which is I'm really, really proud of the numbers, the final numbers from the Brightwood-Lincoln project. I don't think I have anything at all negative to say about how close we came to meeting all of the goals. I think really the first big project that we've looked at, having met almost every single goal, is really something to be proud of. So I just stand by that.
Okay, thank you. Tim, you have any comments, questions related to Brightwood?
Could you say?
You're kind of breaking up, Tim, if you can hear me start up.
Did you address that to me?
Yes, Tim, there you go, you're back now. You have any questions or comments for Brightwood, Lincoln?
No, I think it was a terrific success. I, I think Fiore's points are well taken that there's always a little room for improvement, but I mostly feel it was a terrific success and we hit just about every number. So that was, that was encouraging. I just, Mary Beth Cooper was president of Springfield College, and I asked them about their, you know, we're building, there's a filling program start there and mentioned the REO to her. And when they, and she said they have equity diversity inclusion goals that they meet in their bidding process. So I was glad to hear that they, that they also have goals along the lines of the REO for what they're doing for private. So, but I think we did great on Brightwood-Lincoln and comparing to where we were a few years ago. Great.
All right, as, it sounds like we're in a pretty good place. And before I close the book on Brightwood, obviously, it'll be, you know, the information and data will always be there for us to review and reach back to, for examples, and for a template on how to move forward. If, but if there's no objections from the board, since, before we move away from that, I normally, we would wait for our guests to speak, but I kind of like to get it all out now. If there's, if there's no objections, can I, and if there are, we'll wait, make them wait. But just so we're not bouncing back and forth. Charlie or Lisa, without any objection, would you guys like to close the book on this project with your comments as well?
I, we, I guess I would just say I agree with the comments already made. Lindsay kind of covered it. It was, and Tim. You know, we struggled for a while on getting this REO up and compliance off the ground, and it was terrific to do so well with the first project where we were really looking at the numbers in a monthly way. And I think it speaks to, to my opinion, the value of these monthly meetings where we have the data from the GC and are able to engage with them around their different subs and the good work that Shay and his team have been doing as well on following up contractor by contractor. So, great job.
Thank you. Charlie, would you like to comment on the area?
Yeah, I would like to comment. I actually think O'Connell did an exceptional job, especially during the pandemic, which I am constantly reminding people because I know I personally struggled to getting people that had childcare issues to work. And I, I would say, you know, it was a huge learning curve for O'Connell. And to be honest with you, they didn't know what they could and couldn't do in the beginning. And, and if we are going to hold them accountable, or any GC accountable, we need to give them they applied a lot of pressure, but they didn't know their limits, what they could, could they remove a filed sub bidder from the job if they weren't complying? Know what they can and can't do. We've learned a lot. I know I personally have learned a lot on best practices. And, and for a first job to really be tracking, I, I'd say not only O'Connell, but everybody in the city, everybody on this committee and, and being so diligent. You all deserve to pat on the back because you've made a difference in lives, and I think it was a huge success.
Thank you, Charlie. I'm gonna move into Deep Barry in a second, but just Shay, a little bit of homework for you. The, the comment in terms of compliance parameters. Is, is that something that you could or would be feasible to kind of have a little bit more, like maybe a fact sheet or a suggestion, a paper, a short snippet on, with some pointers that could be shared with Fontaine so that they have a little clearer, you know, it was, it was refreshing to hear that the contractor at Brightwood was putting pressure on. But, and moving forward, you know, we, giving them some more clarity as to how, what best practices were utilized that would be beneficial to Liz as she moves forward. Is that something that you, in your wheelhouse, and would that be appropriate to create and kind of forward to her for, you know, evaluation?
Definitely. And, and Liz and I, we have established our rapport, we have weekly meetings. We've been building out the model for Fontaine as well. So definitely, yes.
Okay, thank you. And so I'm happy to say that collectively, all of you are really proud of the work that you guys have put into this. I see Counselor Davila is trying to connect. Yes, he's on. Counselor Davila, welcome to the REO. Just for your own information, we are closing the book on Brightwood. And just very quickly, I'll just simply say that we have either met or the numbers or at least got to a satisfactory point on completion. And there was just, and you just came in at the end of the next change of accolades and shoulder padding by the members of the committee and on how well we've done with that project. We welcome you anyway. And so, but for the sake, we're gonna move right along. And if you want to give me a call after the meeting, I can answer any questions you have about Brightwood personally and get up to date for whatever you may have missed to this point. But where you're coming in, we're about to start talking about the ongoing construction at Dbury and Homer Street. So Shay or Liz, whichever is most appropriate, please, you have the floor.
We'll let Liz go.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. So I have the September numbers here where some, some of you have seen, but those of you who haven't had a chance to look at them, let me just quickly run down where we are. So for people of color, we are at twenty-eight percent. For women, we are at eight point nine four, so we're just gonna call it nine percent. Veterans, we are at ten percent. And Springfield residents, we're at thirty-six percent. And, you know, again, just as a reminder, we're still, you know, in the construction phase of the projects. While we're very happy about the start, we definitely don't want to keep on, keep the momentum going and don't want to lose, lose it. So, you know, to just go back to what Shay said, we are working very actively and diligently to have conversations with subcontractors before. So that's, you know, that's the update on Dbury, and I'll stop there in case anybody has any questions.
Members of the committee, somebody have any questions for Liz at this point? Tim, go ahead.
Yeah, Liz. Tim Allen here. How many employees or how many people are on the job, would you say, at this point, you know, roughly?
Roughly, that is a question. I don't have individual numbers, but I do have the workforce hours. But I'm happy to circle back with you on the, the number of people, if that is of interest.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't know if it's ten people or forty or eighty, you know, I'm not looking for specifics, just about how many. How far along is, the project just started, right?
Okay, so roughly, so I would say, who's the, I'd say probably no more than forty, honestly. And like I said, I can go back.
That's good enough, that's good enough. How, how high will it get when it, when it's fully on?
Okay, perfect. Yes, but I will, but thank you for asking that question. I'll make sure to have that information with me for meetings going forward.
It will, it will, it will fluctuate, Counselor Allen, depending on the, the subs that are on. There will be subs on in certain phases, there'll be subs that will leave, other subs will come on. So the, the actual numbers at a certain time will be fluctuating between what subs are doing, what, when. So there, there are three subs, I believe, on the project right now with one coming on. So there's, there's three subcontractors on right now with obviously the GC, and then there'll be another subcontractor coming on very shortly.
Yes.
All right, good. All right, great, thank you.
Have they started the ports foundation yet?
So the concrete work is, is taking place right now, yes.
Okay, that's. Lindsay, did you have any question or comment? Or even Victor. Victor is a guest, but he's also a member of the city council, so in deference. He's, Victor, did you have a question for?
No questions, go on, just chill.
Okay. I'm just, Liz, the veteran numbers was how much with mine, I got it written down, but I missed the veteran number.
Oh, ten percent.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
And once again, so no questions from the committee, any comments from the committee? If not, once again, if there's no objections, comment from our guest, either Lisa or Charlie.
I would, I'd say that, you know, the first subcontractor that's been on site was the concrete subcontractor for us. And the, personally, from the lessons I've learned at, at Brightwood, I was able to frame conversations and explain the importance. And Fontaine has been exceptionally supportive of a message to the subcontractors. And I think they, they've done very well because of the unified approach that we're both giving them the same message that this is important to the city and to us. And, and they, they, they made good efforts to, to do the right thing. And, and I'd like to commend Fontaine for that.
Well, thank you.
Charlie, thank you.
It's okay to blush, Liz.
I mean, this is why it's working, right? Because all of us, everybody here is really, we're all talking about once a week, multiple times a week to just make sure that, you know, everybody knows we're serious about this. And, you know, we've gone from referring to, to these as goals, but requirements, like that's it. There's no option, basically, and we're, we're making sure to not give people any options, to not hit these goals. So thank you all.
Lisa, would you like to say something?
I, I just wanted to add, I mean, I, I of course echo what Charlie said and just add too that it's been great to work with you, Liz, and to have Fontaine putting the time into new recruitment as well. So not just working to proactively make sure the contractors you're hiring are bringing in diversity, but knowing that the job is going to be, you know, a two-year job. Liz has been setting up meetings with the community colleges and outreach to different organizations in the community to identify people who are interested in coming into the trades and through the schools. Work, we've, we've had a couple of Zooms with representatives from different Springfield public schools to figure out how to, you know, spread the word even more around the work opportunities with apprenticeship programs. But knowing that people, when they come in and are not yet in a union, that they then need to go through the apprenticeship process, it's been coordinating that with us and with other trades. And so it's been great to have Fontaine putting the staff time into that kind of outreach, and I think that's great for Springfield.
Thank you. I'm going to, I appreciate all the accolades, the comments, it sounds like we're doing really well. And I'm, I'm trying to keep track of the time. Shay may have to leave before we finish this next item, but I'd like to at least get into it while he's still here. And that's about the expansion of the role of the REO in relation to we, we have oversight of all vertical construction. We don't do road projects and stuff. But the council itself has had many conversations, and it keeps coming up regarding the granting of special permits, TIFs. And now we have ARPA money, we have this, the Community Preservation Act money. I believe that very shortly, I'm hopeful, and I, some Victor and Tim would agree with this one, that pretty soon we might actually start to get some marijuana or cannabis money coming into the city. But when we start dolving out these money, and this is probably maybe in Lindsay's wheelhouse, she might have more insight to the administration and particularly to the finance department's decision. On, Lindsay, would you feel comfortable trying to kind of talk to us a little bit about these different parts and what role the city council might want to try to put things, the same types of incentives in place when that money is expended as well? And if you're not comfortable, that's fine. I don't expect you to speak gospel on behalf of administration, but you, you've been in enough of the meetings, you know that, you know, CPA money, you know, with the TIFs, you know, it keeps coming up. And could you, would you feel comfortable speaking on that part?
Sure. So I'm not sure exactly how you want me to tie that funding to the REO because the REO is pretty specific in that city, city funding, city project, specific horizontal construction. If we do end up spending ARPA funding or CPA money on projects that fit within those parameters, I could see how potentially the REO could apply there if city council, you know, makes the changes to the current ordinance. But there are many, many instances where that funding is being used that do not fall within those requirements as well. So, Counselor, how else, what else can I say about that stuff that is gonna help this conversation?
Actually, what I'm, I guess, I can't just, I beg patience, everybody. See, let me call you right back, okay? Oh, okay, just give me a few minutes, I'm gonna come on a meeting. Okay, you, like I said, you've been listening to the conversations and, and so maybe not the REO, but what they will, they will generate, I mean, their real concern or consensus seems to be when we give money, public money and city money out to developers or to whatever channels, do we have oversight? If the goals of the REO is, you know, wanting to keep residents working, commute money circulated in our community, is there a role for the REO? Or is there, maybe it was another vehicle, and it's not the REO that should be trying to do this or should have oversight? But, you know, maybe Tim or Victor, or somebody else would have any comments on that. But I put it on the agenda because it keeps popping up. ARPA money, I know, you know, it's not HUD money, it's not the federal money, so it comes with different parameters. But it's, it's all public money. And so.
It is.
Is anybody having, you know, am I kind of just flailing here by myself?
No, Counselor, I understand what you're saying. And I, I do not have that answer. I think that that's more of a law question. Maybe Shay has the answer.
Before he runs.
Oh, I thought you were waving saying that you know the answer. No.
The Shay, that he's.
I'm sorry, what, what, what did you say?
No, forget it. I thought you were waving because you knew what I was talking about, but nevermind.
I gotta get going, I'm sorry.
But he still knows what you're talking about.
Yeah, right.
I know, I know what she's talking about. I've been in some of those meetings.
Yeah, well, thank you, Shay. Well, the thing is, is, Tim, you understand what I'm trying to say and perhaps even Victor.
I, I may can try to help. I mean, there are projects that get funded in other places besides the traditional projects that come before the REO, traditional public construction projects that we talk about here. And, you know, for instance, CPA is a citizen-initiated projects that are funded by a surcharge on our taxes, which creates a lot of money for projects. And each year, we, we approve a bunch of projects. And the question is, should they be, those projects, should they be subject to the REO rules? I mean, that's basically it, isn't it, Melman?
Yeah.
So, so we had a bunch of projects done before us about three weeks ago, which are smaller projects, they're two fifty, maybe even less than two fifty, no more than five hundred. And the question came up as we were approving these projects, they had come through the pipeline from citizens. And there's a good, great organization that, what citizen goes over these projects, et cetera, and picks the ones that they think are the most important. And by the time they get to the city council to be funded, we, because we just, we're not involved in really the scrutiny on the project itself, just involved in the money part of it. And the question came up, once there were some big, bigger ones, should they be subject to REO guidelines kind of thing? And I don't know that there's much more to it than that, it just, I, I kind of agree with Lindsay, like, maybe it's a law department thing where we just ask for a ruling on the extent to which the REO applies.
So.
Most of these projects, so go ahead.
The REO is, is really specific, in my opinion. No, the REO would not apply to any of those projects as of now because it's not a city project, it's not over a certain dollar amount, it's not horizontal construction. So, again, in my opinion, the REO has very strict parameters. And unless there's a project in any of those categories with any of those funding sources that fall within those parameters, no, the REO would not apply.
Okay, that, that I understood. It's just that, I did, what I wanted to have was to bring up the question so that the committee was aware of it. And the thing is, these are the conversations that we will have with the law department, and we will start down the road differently. It may not, REO itself may not be the vehicle for what we're trying to do, that's, I guess.
For example, the TIF, you, the council changed the TIF ordinance.
Right.
Right? Because you weren't able just to add the TIF language into the REO ordinance.
Correct.
So I don't know that the, you know, any changes specifically to the REO would accomplish what you're trying to do. I understand what you're trying to do. I just think, like you said, Counselor, it's a different, probably a different vehicle to get those, the same type of goals in place for those projects as well.
So what I figured, I think what we should do then is, for the work that we do here, we, we can kind of wrap this around that we have been successful, continue to do that. And my colleagues and I, Victor, Tim, and all the colleagues, we will have to have a discussion in a different forum on how to address monitoring, you know, workforce employment conditions and things like that for the other public money that's used, but maybe the vehicle for that is not the REO. That sounds appropriate to everyone.
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Chair, if I, if I may.
Yeah, and I think.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, if I, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. I, yeah, I agree with, with you. This has been talked in the city council and other meetings some months before. And I've even talked about parameters. What is the avenue? I don't know. But it will seem to me that if we're using public money, the issue, the public or local workforce should benefit directly from that money. I'm just throwing this out there because I know there's a lot of unknowns. But it will seem to me that it seems, if possible, for the, the board themselves to adapt themselves parameters. That's, that's a question we should look at. Can they do that themselves? That would be the easiest fix, in my opinion. But no, I, I look forward to the more in-depth, robust conversation on it. Because as we have known, we have noticed and not seen, you have some entities that they keep going year after year and it adapts very quickly to a lot of money. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Well, is there any other questions or comments either from the guests or members of the council that we need to address at this point? And if they're not, we will, I, I think we'll, my colleagues will, will deal with that out for another. But please, if there's any agenda items necessary for the inclusion in the next meeting, please get those to Maureen as soon as possible, or at least make sure that when she starts to send out requests and notices that we're getting back to her on time. And if there are any other questions or comments?
My rate, my hand raised for a while now, because she didn't see it. Is it, do you see it?
Yes, go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, okay. The, I had two questions. One is, I think we should approach the law department on that or invite them to attend the meeting, you know, our next meeting or in the next month or two, to discuss it. So we can have a better discussion on it, but I think we should try to finish the discussion, which I think you're trying to do. And the other thing I had my hand raised for is, is there a final report? Did I miss it? Or is there a final report on the Brightwood Lincoln project? Which, you know, a page or two summarize is the completion of the project and how the REO numbers were like, you know, physical written report. I know we've talked about it at the council, but. Anybody hear me?
Yeah, we hear you. Yeah, I hear you. I, I, I think the final numbers might have came out, but Shay's gone, so Shay's not here to answer that. And that's what have came from him.
Yeah, well, I'm fine. I, I can follow up. I just didn't know if you would agree. It seems to me that we should put a.
You're breaking up a little bit.
A final report, a written report, or an email or in hard copy. Yeah, I don't know why. For the council meeting, is that better?
Nowadays, yeah.
I'm out, I'm outside now.
Your pitch was, we hear your words.
Okay, so I was just saying that there's an opportunity, I think, that we should take to put out a final report on Brightwood Lincoln, you know, which says, it can just be about the REO part of it, or it could be about the whole project, whatever. But if we're just, just about the REO part of it, that, and get those numbers around, say the project's complete, here, these were our targets. Here's how we did on the targets. This is probably the most successful project we've had trying to achieve these targets. And congratulations, everybody involved, something like that. And I don't know if we do that, but that's, I think, would be a way to get this around and, and maybe send it, you know, maybe send it to Point of View or the Republican or. The reminder. Pardon me?
No, no, my, sorry, just personally, no, my, nothing.
You know, maybe send it around to the media. So there's some press for how this, how this went for Springfield, et cetera. I, I, anyway, it's my thought. If Shay's the guy to do that, then we could ask Shay to do it. It seems to me a great opportunity to, to, to publicize. And I'm not really into the publicizing of, of much. I kind of keep to myself with a lot of the things I do. But, but I think this is great for the city and great for our committee and great for equity and diversity and inclusion.
All right, I'll certainly follow up with Shay and ask him to put something together and then we can make it sure it gets circulated to the appropriate channels. And Lindsay, Lisa, did you want to close this out?
Sure, thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to echo what Tim was saying. I think it would be useful to have just a short report because it can even speak to like issues like childcare that, you know, made it a little challenging on coming just below on some of the goals. And UMS Boarding Authority routinely does this and asks the GCs to just give a few sentences of like what really worked and a few sentences on where there were challenges. And it's just useful for, for the assessment, given that each GC will be judged on their performance for future work to kind of know some of the factors that went in that led to success or led to challenges. So I think I just echo that it would be useful and useful to see what the final numbers by contractor were.
Okay. Sounds, any other questions, comments, or anything else we need to deal with? I want to thank everybody for their time and get your agenda items into Maureen as soon as possible. Thank you, Liz. Please extend my gratitude to your entire staff, Lindsay to your staff and everybody, all in attendance. Thank you. And motion to adjourn. I'm gonna take that as the.
It's good. It's good, good news.
Okay. Well, everybody be safe and we'll see each other soon. Take care. Thank you, everyone.